This particular episode in history is termed as Liberation War of Bangladesh. This particular war is known to us as India Pakistan nineteen seventy one war. In this particular lecture, what we will be doing is, we will be starting off with the liberation war of Bangladesh. We will be seeing how after getting liberated from Pakistan, Bangladesh has evolved as an important neighbor of India. Of course, Indian Bangladesh have had not, they did not always have best of relations. There were ups and downs, but we will look into them. We will look how Bangladesh has evolved as a useful and an important ally and an important neighbor of India over the period of time. What is the position of Bangladesh in India's foreign policy discourse? And from here, where do these two neighbors go? Starting off with the liberation war of Bangladesh, we will not concentrate much on the liberation war of Bangladesh because it requires a separate session in itself. We will only look into this particular topic in a brief way. Bangladesh was earlier East Pakistan. As we know, in nineteen forty seven, when British, British government freed India, it also partitioned India. This partition of India resulted in creation of Pakistan, but not creation of Pakistan as a single territorial entity. What happened was they created a Pakistan on west side of India and a Pakistan on east side of India. This was the L twelve Bangladesh. The creation of Pakistan was on a basis of a theory called two nation theory. This particular theory proposed or talked about Hindus and Muslims being two separate nations. They not being just two separate religions, but two separate nations. The word nation means community of people having common political aspirations. Muslim League in its manifestos and in its propaganda considered or talked about Hindus and Muslims being two separate political entities, having two separate political aspirations, having different political aspirations. And as we know, this particular proposals and demands by Muslim League led to the partition of India. As per the two nation theory, Bangladesh or East Pakistan and West Pakistan should have had good relations with each other. They should have dwelt together with each other in harmony. But that was not the case. But that was not the case. Why? Because apart from religion, these two parts, these two territories had nothing to keep them together. Bangladesh or the people of East Pakistan consistently considered that West Pakistani authorities are practicing discriminatory, are practicing discriminatory behavior. Most of the economic resources were focused on development of West Pakistan. Most of their military strength was concentrated on West Pakistan. Their important military leaders came from West Pakistan, especially the Punjab area of West Pakistan. Most of their civil servants were from West Pakistan. In the needs of ours, in the need of ours, for example, if a strytron strikes East Pakistan, if a strytron struck East Pakistan, the response from the authorities in West Pakistan was seen to be slow. Educational infrastructure in West Pakistan was considered to be, was considered to be very less in comparison to what was in West Pakistan. On top of that, the people of East Pakistan also considered their language to be sacrificed, their language Bengali to be sacrificed on the altars of Urdu. The people of East Pakistan were not Urdu speakers. They were Bengali speakers. In fact, the people of West Pakistan were also not Urdu speaker, but Urdu was taken up by them, imposed on them and they took it up. The people of East Pakistan did not want to do that. They considered their language or mother tongue to be the only source of communication that they wanted to have with the government. The triggering point with all these differences was the election that was conducted in nineteen seventeen by Ayub Khan. This particular election showcased how divided Pakistan as a political entity was. What we see in this election or what we see in the results of this election is PPP, that is Pakistan People's Party headed by, headed by Zulfikar Buttho, getting almost all the seats in West Pakistan. And Awami League. The party headed by Mujibur Rahman. Mujibur Rahman is also called as Bangla Bandhu. Very important fact. It may be asked in prelims. Please remember it. Another Bengali is also addressed by the name of Bandhu and that is Siardas. Siardas is called Desh Bandhu. Mujibur Rahman is called Bangla Bandhu. So Bangla Bandhu, Mujibur Rahman's Awami League got all the seats, all the seats in East Pakistan. This particular result also showed that Awami League got majority in the election. Awami League got majority in the elections and hence the demand for Mujibur Rahman being appointed as the Prime Minister of Pakistan arose. It was not an illegitimate demand. It was not something that, it was not something that should have even been demanded. This was logical. The party which got majority, its leader should have been appointed as Prime Minister. But the same did not happen. Ayub Khan and the power elites of West Pakistan considered ki if Mujibur Rahman becomes the Prime Minister of Pakistan, his policies will be detrimental. His policies will be detrimental to the unity of Pakistan. They avoided he being appointed as the Prime Minister. Not only that, they in fact arrested him and took him to an undisclosed location. The other contender that was PPP and its leader, Zulfikar Buttho was more in quest of power than political ethics. He once said, if I have to choose between two peas, Pakistan and power, power is the one that I will choose. Power is the one that I will choose. Because of this attitude of the politicians from West Pakistan, rebellion arose in East Pakistan. It was not rebellion as such. At the start, it was, in the beginning, it was a nonviolent protest movement, mostly led by the students of Dhaka University. Mostly led by the students of Dhaka University. As we have seen throughout history, universities are the place where political unrest starts the first. Because youth have their energy, they, youths are idealist, they are driven by ideology. And because they are driven by ideology, we see political unrest first and foremost starting in universities. So, nonviolent movement started in the Dhaka University and they claimed in the beginning, they wanted, what they wanted was Mujibur Rahman being appointed the Prime Minister. But as time went on and as they were neglected by the politicians of West Pakistan, their aim now became independence. Their aim now became independence. This particular claim now disturbed Ayub Khan and Zulfikar Buttho to crush their demands, to crush the demands of the students of Dhaka University and other people who were supporting the idea of creation of Bangladesh. Pakistani authorities launched Operation Searchlight. The basic aim of this operation was to search those people who supported the idea of creating Bangladesh and then persecuting them. There was lot of violence during this particular operation. Lot of it was written in Indian newspapers, lot of it was written in the Western newspapers also. During this particular Operation Searchlight, many refugees started coming to India and the bordering states of Tripura, West Bengal, they started seeing Assam, they started seeing large influx of refugees from East Pakistan. Now this created a problem in India. First and foremost, what it did was, it stressed the resources of a poor country like India, especially the food resources. What it also did was it did not create violence, but it had the tendency of creating violence. Why? Because most of the refugees who came from East Pakistan were Hindus. They feared the most. They thought they will be made, they will be made the target of floating the idea of Bangladesh. And it was true also. So when these people, when the refugees started coming to India, these were the two most important fears. One was resources, strain on resources of Indians. Second was, there was also fear that what is happening to the Hindus in East Pakistan may be retaliated in India by attacking the Muslims. Thankfully, that did not happen, but this was the fear that Indian government had. Hence, what Indian government did was, it started diplomatically engaging diplomatically engaging with rest of the world. When I say rest of the world, it means it engaged with both the Western bloc that was led by US and the Eastern bloc that was led by USSR. The response of these two blocs were completely different. United States during the era of President Nixon, during the era of President Nixon and his Foreign Secretary Henry Kissinger showed complete indifference to what was happening in Bangladesh or East Pakistan. They should complete indifference to what was happening in East Pakistan. They should complete indifference to the atrocities of the people. Atrocities on the people. And this was actually quite surprising because people of US and people of Western countries had great sympathies with the people of East Pakistan. The newspapers wrote in great details of how the Pakistani army is treating its own citizens. Any which ways due to strategic reasons, United States, United States did not provide any assistance with respect to, with respect to India's militarily request, militarily request, no, or else what I, what we can say is, it did not yield to putting diplomatic pressure, not military request, it did not yield in putting diplomatic pressure on West Pakistan to rectify the situation. United States though did provide India with food resources so that India could feed the refugees from East Pakistan. What happened on the other side? With respect to USSR, USSR not only showed sympathy with the people of East Pakistan, but it also guaranteed India military help if, if the war resulted in US coming to the aid of Pakistan. This particular episode resulted in the Treaty of Friendship between India and USSR signed in nineteen seventy one, the twenty year old treaty. It simply meant that if a country attacks India, Soviet Union will come to the aid of India. Through this diplomacy, what India did was, it made sure that rest of the world stays away from military action if it happens and the military action therefore gets limited between India and Pakistan. The Treaty of Friendship between India and USSR was also important with respect to China. Because China at the time, China in nineteen seventy one was not on friendly terms with Soviet Union. In fact, they had border clashes. So, this particular treaty also made it difficult for the Chinese to intervene if the war broke out between India and Pakistan. Situation kept on getting tense. Both countries, that is India and Pakistan, used every weapon in their armor to out with the other. Pakistan soon lost patience and on third December nineteen seventy one launched what is now known, or what was even then known, Operation Changes Khan. Operation Changes Khan is, what Operation Changes Khan meant was war with India. India retaliated and in this sixteen days war or fifteen days war, India secured surrender of Pakistani troops in East Pakistan. What it also did was, on sixteenth December, freed Bangladesh from Pakistan. Ten days prior to it, that is on sixth December, India had already, India had already declared Bangladesh to be a free country. So India had declared Bangladesh to be a free country before Bangladesh coming into existence. Bangladesh came into existence on sixteenth December. Bangladesh came into existence on sixteenth December. And with this, what India also assured was that at least on one border, at least on one border, we have a friendly neighbor. At least on one border, we have a friendly neighbor. Or else what we will be seeing, on the western border, there was Pakistan, on eastern border, there was China and also Pakistan in the shape of East Pakistan. So it was not only, it was not only the human rights that concerned India and pushed it into this war, but it was also a strategic move by India to create a friendly neighborhood. It was not always friendly though. What we see after nineteen seventy one is what we see after nineteen seventy one is Bangladesh going through phases where it was a democracy, a secular democracy. Bangladesh, Bangladeshi constitution talks about it being a Islamic democracy, but essentially it is a secular democracy. Alright, it is a secular democracy. Constitutionally, yes, it is an Islamic democracy. But otherwise, all the aspects that we see in a secular democracy are seen in Bangladesh. So Bangladesh went through phases. At one point of time under Bangla Bandhu Mujibur Rahman, democracy was prominent. Democracy was prominent. After few years, what we also saw was, after few years, what we also saw was this democracy greeting hampered by the murder of Sheikh Mujibur Rahman and military dictatorship taking its place. The dictators of Bangladesh were inclined towards Pakistan because they were part of the Pakistani army before nineteen seventy one. And hence their inclination was obvious. But again, when Bangladesh moved back to being a democracy, what we see is it enhancing its relations with India. And this is true with respect to both parties. Bangladesh essentially has two important parties. It has many parties, but two parties in Bangladesh are most important parties and either of the two form the government. One is Awami League and second is BNP. That is Bangladeshi National Party, Bangladesh National Party or Bangladeshi National Party. India's relations with respect to Bangladesh are better when Awami League is in power. Because at this point of time, Awami League is led by the daughter of Mujibur Rahman, that is Sheikh Hasina. With respect to BNP, India's relations don't get bad, but BNP has better relations with China. BNP has better relations with Pakistan. Now we don't want Bangladesh to have bad relations with any country. We only want them to have good relations with us. With respect to Awami League, our relations, India's relations to Bangladesh are given primacy. With respect to BNP, Bangladesh's relations to Pakistan and China are given primacy. BNP does not execute or is not anti-India. It does not execute those policies which are anti-India. Alright, but BNP does have better working relations with Pakistan and China. This year or last year, to be more precise, that is two thousand twenty one was the year in which India and Bangladesh both observed Golden Jubilee celebration, Golden Jubilee of Bangladesh's liberation from Pakistan. To be part of this celebration or to celebrate together, Indian Prime Minister Narendra Modi visited Bangladesh in March two thousand eleven. It was a very significant visit. First and foremost, what it did was, it in a way solidified or it in a way guaranteed India's support to Bangladesh in the coming years also. And other was, it also was the time when two important events were cor, uh, two important events were observed. First was of course, the Golden Jubilee of Liberation War. And second was the birth century, hundred birth anniversary of Bangla Bandhu Sheikh Mujibur Rahman. So both of these events were observed. In this particular visit, Prime Minister Modi and Prime Minister Sheikh Hasina also spoke in great details about the, Prime Minister Modi and Prime Minister Hasina also spoke in great details about the future relations between India and Bangladesh. And they started on the note of India guaranteeing Covid vaccines to Bangladesh. Now Bangladesh is also getting Covid vaccines from China. Bangladesh is also getting Covid vaccines from China, but the mood in Bangladesh and the medical faculty in Bangladesh is inclined to use vaccines made in India, both Covid hidden Covid vaccine. In fact, if you look at what is happening at the global level, Sinovax, that is a vaccine produced by China, uh, it has been used by many countries in the world, but the inclination of the world, if we compare the vaccines of India and China, so the inclination is more towards the vaccine produced by India. The same is happening in Bangladesh. Bangladesh, the medical faculty of Bangladesh is inclined towards the Indian vaccines and Indian government has promised to help them through of course its program, Vaccine Maytri. India and Bangladesh have also decided to celebrate sixth December, the day on which India, the day on which India stated the existence of Bangladesh as a nation to be Friendship Day or Maytri Divas. It is important to remember, I have stated earlier also, India considered Bangladesh to be a nation on sixth December. It gave it, it recognized Bangladesh as a nation on sixth December, but Bangladesh was liberated from Pakistan on sixteenth December. So remember the difference between two dates. Recognition is something that we are recognizing. We are saying that Bangladesh is a separate nation. Liberation is when Bangladesh actually became a separate nation. So we have decided, both India and Bangladesh have decided that sixth December from now on will be celebrated by both the countries as Maytri Divas. What else did happen? What else we saw happening? Both the countries also took the decision of building a war memorial or a decided, both the countries decided to build a war memo real. And this war memorial will pay respect to the brave hearts of India and Bangladesh both who fought in the Depression War of Bangladesh. A very positive start, a very emotional start to India and Bangladesh's next chapter of bilateral relations. They also they also decided that the foundation stone of this memorial will be the foundation stone of this memorial memorial will be will be built as soon as possible. On economic front, if we see the history of relations between India and Bangladesh on economic front, India India and Bangladesh have shared good relations. In fact, Bangladesh is the biggest trading partner of India in South Asia. Bangladesh biggest trading partner of India in South Asia. India has consistently worked on giving more and more access to more and more products of Bangladesh in Indian markets. India has given duty-free access to Bangladeshi products in its markets. India has also tried to lift India has also tried to lift non-tariff barriers. India has also promised or India has consistently lifted non-tariff barriers on the Bangladeshi imports. What are the non-tariff barriers? Basically, when you do trade with some country, when you do trade with any country, there are two types of barriers. One are trade barriers, one are tariff barriers and another are non-tariff barriers. So, uh, tariff barriers are where you put hindrances of imports from some country by increasing the taxes on that products and increasing taxes on the products that come from that country. Non-tariff barriers are when you do not allow or you put hindrances or you do not, uh, in a way, give free access to the product of a country through measures that are not related to taxes. For example, I can say, as if suppose I am a policymaker, I can say ki Bangladeshi products will not be allowed in West Bengal. Or Bangladeshi products will be sold only in certain areas of West Bengal. These are non-tariff barriers. This is an example of non-tariff barriers. There are other ways also in which non-tariff barriers can be erected. Bangladesh and India also before that, uh, the main items of imports from Bangladesh are textiles. Bangladesh has become, you know, the textile factory of the world. It has become the textile factory of the world and many textile products of Bangladesh find their way to India. And India is also the country from which many a times Bangladeshi products get transported to rest of the world. If we consider what is traded from India to Bangladesh or what is exported from India to Bangladesh, there are ample number of goods, most importantly pharmaceutical groups, pharmaceutical products. India is the pharmacy of the world and this particular pharmacy of the world provides cheaper medical goods or cheaper medicines to the Bangladeshi people. India and Bangladesh are also competitors in world market. Mainly textile. Mainly textile. But this competition is a healthy competition. In fact, competition in Bang... with Bangladesh in the textile market has improved has improved the products from Indian textiles. It has also improved the efficiency of Indian textile manufacturers. It is therefore considered to be a healthy competition and such competition should be there in international trade. India also provides Bangladesh, India has also provided Bangladesh a line of credit of ten billion dollars for the purpose of for the purpose of its development. If we consider another aspect of India-Bangladeshi relation, if we consider another aspect of India-Bangladeshi relation, then that will be connectivity. This is very important. And Bangladesh plays a very important role in the prospect of India connecting itself and connected with the other nations of Asia and also with Bangladesh. India and Bangladesh over the period of time have revitalized their road transportation, their road connectivity. Kolkata was connected by road to Dhaka in the year nineteen ninety-nine. Sorry, I pronounced it Cal... Kolkata. The reason for that is when I was in school, it was Kolkata or Calcutta, Kolkata. Now, it is Kolkata. I am sorry for mispronouncing the term. So, direct road linkage or direct road connectivity has been established between Kolkata and Dhaka in nineteen ninety-nine. Both these countries have also both these countries have also been active in connecting with each other through railways. At this point of time, there are two railway lines active between India and Bangladesh. One is the Maitri Express. One is the Maitri Express which connects Dhaka to Kolkata. And other is Bandhan Express. Other is Bandhan Express that connects that connects Kolkata to Kulna. Bandhan Express connects Kulna to Kolkata. This was about connectivity between India and Bangladesh. Now, what is the importance of connectivity between India and India through Bangladesh? When I say India through India, I mean connectivity of mainland India to northeast India. If we see the map of India, so what we find is the northeastern part of India is sandwiched in a way between China, Myanmar and Bangladesh. Through a very narrow chicken's corridor, mainland India is connected to the northeast part of India. And because the connection between mainland India and northeast part of India is through this narrow corridor, transportation is a difficulty. Connectivity between northeast India and mainland India is a difficulty. That is the reason Bangladesh is important to us. Now, it is through Bangladesh that India considers it is through Bangladesh that India considers connecting Kolkata and Tripura. Connecting Kolkata and Agartala. If this project happens and if we look at the prospects, they look quite bright. If that happens, then India will have the Indian government or the Indian people will have less trouble traveling from one part of it to the other part. Bangladesh is also important with respect to connecting with other eastern neighbors like Myanmar. It is through Bangladesh that we are projecting to play a main role in the East Asia region or the region where Asian countries are located. The Act Asia, Act East Policy the Act East Policy of India. What is Act East Policy? Act East Policy is, so in nineteen ninety-one or in nineteen ninety-two, Prime Minister Pivnarsimha Rao came up with Look East Policy. Look East Policy was, India needed to engage more and build a strong relation with the countries to its eastern side, to its eastern neighborhood, that is Asian countries. Act East, Act East Policy was given by Prime Minister Modi when he said Indian not only needs to look east, but engage even more. Do development activities, do trade, build people-to-person contact even more with the countries of East Asia. That can only happen if we have good connectivity with the countries of East Asia and that connectivity can only be built geographically through Bangladesh. I am talking about road and rail connectivity. Of course, you can travel by plane, you know, without getting the help of Bangladesh, but road and rail connectivity are important for mass transports of goods and people. Act East Policy therefore depends to a large extent on good India-Bangladesh relations. Then we come to the most important aspects from the point of view of India and that is the security the security aspect of India-Bangladesh relations. At one point of time during the military dictatorship in Bangladesh, Bangladesh was used Bangladesh was used as a safe heaven for for the secessionist of northeast. It was used as safe heaven for the terrorist who conducted terrorist activities in northeast. So, they will conduct their activities and run to Bangladesh and get safe heaven over there. This happened during the time of, this happened during the time of the military dictatorship in Bangladesh. The same was true with respect to extremist Islamic groups which operated in West Bengal, Tripura and Assam. The situation though changed with coming of Sheikh Hasina. Even if we consider the earlier government of Khalidazia. So, it was the government of Bangladeshi National Party. Uh, situation started to improve, but Bangladesh National Party did not pay as much attention to the security requirements of India as Sheikh Hasina does. Alright, so after the coming of Sheikh Hasina, after the coming to the power of Sheikh Hasina, what have we seen in all these years is Bangladesh acting against those group which are security threat to India. Which are security threats to India. The prime among them the prime amongst them has been Jamatul Mujahidin. Bangladesh has acted against this group. Bangladesh has also made it impossible for the secessionist of northeast, including the activists from including the activist from Ulfah. It has made it difficult or it has made it possible for this activist not to operate from Bangladesh. So, Ulfah, which at one point of time had made, it had almost made its base in Bangladesh, is now not able to carry out its operation from the country. Ulfah is United Liberation Front of Assam. United Liberation, United Liberation Front of Assam. This particular body wants an independent Assam. Alright, so at one point of time, it was very active from Bangladesh, but now it is not. Lastly, India-Bangladesh relations are still marked by one issue, by one important issue. Actually, there are many other issues also which in a way have not been fully settled, but amongst them, the most important is the border issue. India and Bangladesh share territorial border as well as maritime border. Territorial border is land border and maritime border is their borders at, their borders in Bay of Bengal. With respect to territorial borders, with respect to territorial borders, India and Bangladesh share territorial border of India and Bangladesh share territorial border of almost four thousand kilometers. Almost four thousand kilometers. This is the fourth largest land border anywhere in the world. This is the fourth largest land border anywhere in the world. In fact, India has its longest land border with Bangladesh. It is not with Pakistan, it is not with China, it is not with Myanmar. India's longest land border is with Bangladesh. In many parts, this border has still not been settled. Many parts, this particular border has been still not settled. Hence, settling this border is important for giving new impetus to relation between, to the relations between India and Bangladesh. Maritime borders between India and Bangladesh are also not completely settled. Hence, the navies of each other enter into each other's territories, enter into what India considers to be its territory and what Bangladesh considers to be its territory. Though it has not led to any untoward incidents. What next? In what has to be fixed, apart from border issue, there is also the issue of Tista, Tista, not Tesla, Tista. Tista is the river that flows from India and enters Bangladesh. Alright, so the issue is related to the use of its water. Test, Tisla, sorry, Testa, I spoke Tesla, it's not Tesla, Tista. The water of Tista is important for both India and Bangladesh. And hence, joint negotiations, compromise and settlement of this particular river dispute is important for the people of both countries. I think this. I think this uh. Was enough for understanding the relations that India-Bangladesh had have, have had. The relations that India and Bangladesh are having and the relations that India and Bangladesh may have in the future. We'll soon meet again, thank you everyone for watching me and listening to me, bye.